I'm not one for the spotlight, so this gives me a bit of a rush and a change from being at home in the studio.
L.A.'s the perfect city for it. It's a vibrant, diverse crowd. They care about art. They care about art in a performative way. They're very supportive. It's a fantastic crowd, and we're thrilled to bring the national championships here.
I think this event is an incredibly fun thing, and if you've never been, you should definitely come.
The Art Battle Championship will be held in downtown L.A. November 28th with even more live painting. Los Angeles is on the cutting edge of the healthy local food trend. Food Day L.A. is just one of 8,000 such events that happen around the country.
L.A. is fast making a name as the good food capital of the country. City leaders held the eighth annual L.A. Food Day, a combination of farmer's market and outdoor workshop on all things related to the so-called "good food economy," one that produces healthy, affordable, and sustainable food.
This is, I would say, three times, four times larger than what we had last year, and it is my honor to encourage everyone to try the food, learn about all the different healthy products and healthy options.
And again, talk about healthy eating, organic food, for those who are minorities who may not have that at home.
Good food economy provides access to healthy food for all communities, and it also provides access to good jobs and economic opportunity for all.
Los Angeles has become really one of the food leaders of the United States. Our food here is creative, it's innovative, it's entrepreneurial.
In fact, L.A. has been honored by the United Nations for its Good Food Purchasing Program, which has pumped $15 million into local food economies. The program is now spreading across the country.
Six years ago today, the city of Los Angeles became the first institution to adopt the Good Food Purchasing Policy, a landmark policy directing departments to purchase food that reflects our shared values in supporting local economies, nutrition, environmental sustainability, fair labor, and animal welfare.
California now also has the Safe Sidewalk Vending Act, which decriminalizes street vendors and brings more variety and access to local food economies.
Yeah, part of my vision for a good food economy is having street vendors really help activate our streets.
Meanwhile, city leaders are also encouraging grocery stores in food-poor urban areas like South L.A. to provide more fresh produce and organic foods.
As the richest country in the world, and we're in the richest state in the richest country in the world, everybody in our midst ought to have food, they ought to have good quality food, and it ought to be very accessible to them.
As for the good foods available right here at this event...
I liked it because it had good flavor to it than other normal foods.
L.A. may have just won itself a new convert to healthy eating.
The city also honored businesses that are good food champions and which provide healthy, affordable food to their community. While food was also on the minds of hundreds of Angelinos who came out for L.A.'s first Filipino-Angeles food festival and block party to enjoy some ethnic Filipino dishes created by some of L.A.'s most innovative chefs and restaurants.
Eat, Play, Move, that's what it is. Uh, this is the traditional Filipino crispy pata. It's basically a pork leg that's deep-fried, but this time, the traditional one is just deep-fried and dry. This time, they made it so special because now it's smothered with spicy sauce over rice, so you can't go wrong with that.
It's nice seeing all the Filipinos come together, support each other, and support the local community.
So I think this is a really cool event. It kind of puts Filipino mainstream food in the spotlight, so you know, even if you're not Filipino, you can get, you can come down here to L.A. and try like various dishes.
Highlight for us today has been the food and the drink, obviously, but it's the people. You know, you meet so many cool people, we're all enjoying the same thing, we're all out here just showing some love for the Filipino and Filipino-American communities, and we're loving it.
I think it's really great. It's a way to get people together. Food, I think, is a big cultural thing that is easy to get people together, whether you're Filipino or not. I think, you know, getting a community together is always a benefit.
You may think you're just going to see wildlife photography, but you'll get a lot more at the National Geographic Photo Arc exhibit. You may actually start to care about the fate of endangered animals.
Wildlife photographer Joel Sartori is on a mission to photograph 12,000 of the world's most threatened, endangered, or close to extinct animals and get people to care about what happens to them. So far, he's photographed more than 8,000.
I think humans are hunting them, which is not okay, and I think we should do something about it.
Sartori's photography has led to this National Geographic Photo Arc exhibit at the Annenberg Space for Photography.
He actually travels to zoos, so all of the 8,400 species that he has photographed have been animals that are in human care, and so he travels to zoos across the nation, across the world.
So how do you get creepy, crawly, feathery, furry creatures to pose and sit still? Easy, they don't always. You just have to catch that magic moment from inside white boxes, black boxes, in front of dark and light backdrops. Almost always, at some point, if you're patient enough, a memorable photo is born.
I'm really into photography, and I'm taking a lot of photography classes, so I thought it'd be cool to see images of animals.
The exhibit has several interactive stations like this one, where you answer 15 questions to find out what kind of an animal you are. I have answered 13 of them, I have two more, so let's see. My favorite dinosaur, and I am a night owl, and let's see, I get lion.
Like, I've never seen a lot of these animals, it's cool to see them.
Some of the animals are endangered, their population's shrinking, while others are coming back from the brink of extinction. Sadly, this was the last known Columbia Basin pygmy rabbit. It died at the Portland Zoo and is now thought to be extinct. The white rhino is close behind with only two known animals left, but they may come back yet.
The white rhinoceroses, we only have two females left, and so we have scientists on four different continents that are working to see what they can do to continue that species. So, for example, they are studying to see if they can create an embryo.
We thought we were just gonna see pictures of cute animals, and it really does bring to life for them how important it is to make sure that these animals stay around so that future generations can enjoy them.
I think animals are really important for the world and what they do, so I think it's really heartbreaking that animals are going extinct.
While getting the white rhino's back is still up in the air, it seems Sartori has succeeded in his primary mission: getting humans who see his animals to care.
Sartori has visited 40 countries in his quest to photograph as many of the animals as possible. Well, speaking of animals, experience the wonder and magic of this year's Must See Holiday Lights at the L.A. Zoo, unleash your creativity at an art and craft fair, and hit the ice in downtown L.A. All this and this week's Things to Do. L.A.'s Must See Holiday Light Experience returns and promises to shine more brightly than ever with a dazzling new area to explore and luminous updates throughout. Explore a magical wonderland of animal-inspired light displays while enjoying classic seasonal delights under the stars at the L.A. Zoo. Highlights include a brand-new version of the popular Twinkle Tunnel, a dramatic musical water and light show, a glittering disco ball forest, real reindeer, and visits with Santa on select nights. L.A. Zoo Lights is open nightly 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. from November 16th through January 6th, excluding November 22nd, December 24th, and December 25th. Barnes-Dole Art Center presents Barnes-Dole Art and Craft Fair. The fair is free, kid-friendly, and a wonderful way to enjoy art with friends and family. Just in time for some holiday shopping, you can expect a fun day as you purchase homemade goods catering to all tastes and budgets in support of local artists. Barnes-Dole Art and Craft Fair showcases diverse work from the Art Center students and faculty, including handcrafted jewelry, ceramics, cards, prints, paintings, drawings, and photography. Browse work from local artisans and find the perfect holiday gift, from the next statement piece to the ideal coffee mug. Located next to the world-renowned Frank Lloyd Wright-designed Holly Hawk House and a stone's throw from the L.A. County Museum Art Gallery, the Arts and Crafts Fair takes place on November 18th from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Barnes-Dole Art Center in L.A. You gotta have some fun on the ice this winter season, so strap on your skates or rent some and hit the Pershing Square Ice Rink. The 7,200-square-foot rink will be open through January 21st, and more than 50,000 people are expected to strap on the blades during the two-month run. Lots of events are planned on the ice that will sure to keep the whole family entertained. For a list of events, go to HollywoodIcerinkDowntownLA.com. And that's a look at some things to do. That's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org, and check out our newest social media videos, L.A. This Minute. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
Prepare yourself for a fiesta on Alvera Street with MetroLink. All MetroLink trains are bike-friendly. Just remember to properly secure your bike. Take one of the six MetroLink lines to L.A. Union Station. Head west from the MetroLink terminal, and remember to walk your bike until you exit Union Station. Cross Alameda, and there you'll find Alvera Street, where you'll likely be greeted by traditional folk entertainment in the main plaza. Stop by the El Paso Inn for a rich atmosphere and a unique Mexican dining experience. Be sure to check out the Avala Adobe, which lies in the heart of Alvera Street. The Avala Adobe is the oldest standing residence in Los Angeles. The house was used as a townhouse and was donated to the city in the 1920s. Since then, it has been a museum for over 80 years. Be sure to lock up your bike at one of the city's many bike racks. Cross Main Street and head over to the Old Plaza Church, also known as La Placita. The church was founded in 1814 and is a California historical landmark. Right next door is La Plaza de Cultura y Artes. Their mission is to cultivate and celebrate the Mexican-American and Mexican culture in Los Angeles. The second floor recreates Main Street in the 1920s. With MetroLink, you can explore historic Los Angeles.
If everyone would please take a seat. I want to welcome you to Los Angeles City Hall. This council meets Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Again, the public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Would you please call a roll?
Bloomingville, Bonn, and Buscaino, Sidio, Englander, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, Sofaro, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, ten members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval the minutes.
Mr. Krikorian moves, so Mr. Corretts seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Buscaino moves, and Sidio seconds. Continue.
Mr. President, Items 1 through 3 are items noticed for public hearing, and there's a request to hold 1 through 3, and there are cards on this.
Okay, without objection, please continue.
Items 4 through 7 are items for which public hearings have been held. Item 7 should be held on the desk, sir.
Let's hold Item 7 and prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Items 8 and 9 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards?
Yes, sir, there are cards on both items, sir.
Okay, continue.
Mr. President, that takes council to presentations. Items called special or general public comment, sir.
Mr. Preman, I see you in the back. Why don't you come up? Sergeants, if you- If you could... Mr. Previn, items one, two, three, and nine, and then your general public comment.
Thank you, sir. Good morning. It's Eric Previn from Studio City. I reside in CD2. The ones you got noticed for public hearing caught my attention. Good work, by the way. These are some bonds for one case, all in CD8, Marquis Harris Dawson's district. One for 32 multifamily, one for 38 multifamily on West Colden. The other one's over on South Figaro. But then the first one threw me because it's only for eight million and doesn't specify how many units over at 9,500 South Broadway. I don't know. I mean, maybe that would be great to know, only because we love clarity and transparency and are tough for hearing information. By the way, kudos to O'Farrell and you for getting a couple of liquor stores going. One over at CBS and one over at Price. No, no.
That's already been voted on.
I'm moving by very quickly, sir.
Let's stay at... No, let's stay on subject.
Okay, fair enough. Let's stay on subject. Thank you for leaning against about $34,000 worth of characters today. But at item seven, and correct me if I'm wrong, you're putting it... Sometimes it's available for speaking, is it not today, seven?
Mr. Previn.
We've already held the hearing.
Okay, fine.
Do you want to just go to your general public comment?
No, no. I'm going to go to the ones that I can, which is eight. Item eight, I looked at it. Thank you. I took the time to look at it for you. It's a CD8 lighting district. Now, what makes it so interesting is it's about a $33,000 additional charge for the... It's spread out over a number of residents in the area who are going to be sharing it. But I looked at what the cha-ching up would be from about 175 that they're paying now to like 475. So, you know, these folks are... There's a lot of them, too, because it's tied into one of the transit districts. So this is an example. Yesterday at Board of Supervisors, they had almost like a mini 10 where a bunch of small-time landlords and people who can't pay rent came to talk about it. This is one of the examples of how people get upcharged and then they have to cover it. So it makes the 10 conversation, you remember the rent control conversation, complicated for people. So this is exactly the kind of thing that we're... They're working to try to limit...
Mr. Previn.
The small-time landlords are, sir. I'm ready to go for my general public.
Just give him his one minute.
Sure. I just want to say officially that Mike Bonin and Paul Corretts are both welcome in Studio City. We... Our Government Affairs Committee had a little discussion. We thought the campaign finance ordinance, it's going to be amended one of these days. After early morning rules committee, they'll bring it to council. But there's been some discussion, and we would love to invite not just them, but the advocates and activists who are interested in this, and also, obviously, the residents of Studio City and Sherman Oaks and all the little neighborhoods where we live with these ordinances that, you know, familiarize voters with the candidates through debates and through other things. One, state assembly person who ran against Adrian Nisarian said that it cost her $4,400 just to have a candidate statement. So that's something that maybe the city could add to the mix. We have a lot of great ideas, but we're very appreciative of Bonin and Corretts from the richest districts coming to Studio City among the bottom five poorest districts. Only in terms of average wages, sir. We're rich in spirit. So, thank you, and we look forward to... Just set some dates, and we can move into that configuration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Herman, you have items one, two, three, eight, and nine. And your general public comment.
So now that the responsibility of the 1982 revenue bonds is going to help exceed multifamily rental housing, but I thought the developers were not involved in taking bribes. The internal revenue regarding the issuance of more serious revenue bonds which fall under the state and federal dollar bonds are the same as plum. Don't we negotiate terms for multifamilies who are disabled and elderly like myself and experience a hostile environment for rehabilitation and improvement? I just want to equip myself and others with rent housing. But for some apparent reason, due to the racist city of Los Angeles, I can't afford rent. I can't afford to live in Los Angeles because I'm a white nigger.
Stay on topic.
Well...
No, stay on topic, Mr. Herman. Go on.
Can I just go to the next page? Jesus Christ. Hearing comments and resolution. Mr. Dawson, I know about those notes, those aggregated principal notes between you and Mr. Weezer for the project off of South Figaro Street excluding me from rent control housing because I'm a white nigger.
No, Mr. Herman, I've already warned you. Just give him his one minute. We're going to get you one minute for general public comment.
I got one minute left.
You have one minute for general public comment, and then you're done. Sharon, he gets one minute.
So now that I've exposed a hostile environment, censorship, no transparency, and for that goddamn reason, Jose Weezer brought the FBI to investigate all of you except for Sidio. Because nothing but rats that need to get cut up and fed to the goats. In addition to that, that rookie city attorney there who don't know a goddamn thing about civil rights better keep his mouth shut because I'm bringing the Department of Justice in here to investigate Rule 77, why you discriminate against people with disabilities, why you don't allow the public to be heard for more than two minutes, and why you violate the Brown Act, jackass. I am the legislative body. I control this horseshoe. And if you don't like it, you fucking white nigger, you're going to hear a lot more of it when I call you a nigger, Herb.
Okay, your time has expired. Take your seat and do not disrupt this meeting anymore. Okay, that... Ms. Richardson, well, that concludes Mr. City Attorney and Madam Clerk, the multi-comment. Ms. Richardson, public comment. Come on. Go ahead.
This is in regard to Russian watchmen. They've been here approximately since, not 2000. I know 20 of them by their faces, but not by their names. And some of them know me when they see me because we cross each other. Some of them are nice to me in case of emergency. One of them, if possible, they'll try to warn me that something's wrong. They have supervisors, and supervisors have supervisors, and they watch this city thoroughly, better than the police department. They try to be nice. They're watching the city to help Russia, and they try to make sure their people don't commit, violate laws as far as I know. They also make reports. Sometimes they use computers. I don't know how the others act. They've been around for a while, and if... They watch the police department, too, to see what they're doing.
Thank you. All right. That ends general public comment, so we have no more cards. So we're going to vote now on items one through three. Please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
We'll now vote on items eight and nine. Mr. Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay. On item nine, let us reconsider that item. So we're voting on reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Okay, Mr. Bonin?
Twelve ayes.
Mr. President, nine needs to be received and filed at the requested department, sir.
So ordered.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning.
Good morning, colleagues. This morning, I'm rising to present a certificate honoring a very special man and a very special institution in the city of Los Angeles. I'm here with Mark Safardi, who for nearly 30 years operated the Brentwood newsstand, which closed earlier this year. One of a dwindling number of newsstands here in Los Angeles. I remember when I moved here in the early 90s from Massachusetts, one of the ways I dealt with being homesick was I would go to a newsstand, and I'd find a few days' old copy of the Boston Globe or the New York Times and get a touch of back east. There used to be, in the city of Los Angeles, some 60-something newsstands. Now, because of the web and Twitter and instant news, anywhere you want it, any way you want it, newsstands are dying, and there's only about 10 left. And the Brentwood newsstand had been there for 30 years. It was an institution in the community. Hundreds of people flocked there every day, not just to buy chewing gum and cigarettes and magazines and newspapers, but for a sense of community. They knew Mark, he knew them, he knew their children, they knew his family history, and they knew each other. And it was, when he started, he had five newsstands. He has one left now on Robertson. And the battle to preserve Mark's newsstand was actually a pretty spectacular one. Thousands of people signed a petition to keep it open. Celebrities, Mickey Cantor got involved. Because the reason, frankly, that his newsstand closed down wasn't because of a lack of business, it was because Whole Foods decided to evict him and close him down. A multi-billion dollar company run by a multi-billionaire couldn't allow them to stay in business because he said it was an impact on their parking, which frankly was BS. And nobody bought it. Mickey Cantor even called, you know, Jeff Bezos and tried to intervene, and Whole Foods heartlessly said no, and Brentwood newsstand had to close down. Let me tell you a little bit about Mark, because he's a really special guy, and he comes from a very special family. His father, Nick, was a Holocaust survivor. He lost most of his family during the war. And Nick joined the partisans in Greece and made a life for himself. And Mark was born in Greece. He and Nick and the family moved here when Nick was just about six years old?
No, I was... I was six.
You were six, yes. No, Dad was older, Mark was six. And when he came here, he opened a number of different businesses, including a supermarket that was open on Venice Beach for about 30 years. And as Mark said, Nick would often give free food to people who didn't have the means to afford it and would take care of people who needed to be taken care of, and would have lines of credit written on little tiny index cards. He was that kind of guy. And Mark sort of gained that spirit and that sort of love for small business and community from him. So Mark attended Hamilton High and Uni High. He worked in his dad's shops, and he went to UCLA. After graduating from college, he opened up some doughnut shops throughout Orange County and LA before he moved into the newsstand business. His first newsstand was at Pico and Westwood in 1983, and his second location in Westwood Village in 96. His third location was the Brentwood newsstand, which I said opened in 1989, and he'd opened two more after that. His passion for community-focused and neighborhood-serving businesses came from his dad, and it's something that he carried on and made real. The outpouring of support for his place was absolutely spectacular. We actually tried to find a location for them in a little median in West LA that didn't quite work out because it's really a special institution that we wanted to continue. Mark is, of course, making the best of a bad situation. He's continuing to operate the newsstand on Robertson for a short while longer, and then he is going to enjoy his retirement with his partner, Mary. His dad, Nick, who he cared for for a number of years, just passed away in February, leaving a legacy of a wonderful man, well-beloved by the community. And I want to thank you for who you are and the role you played in the community and for the incredible business that you operated.
I just wanted to say thank you to Mike and for all... I appreciate everything he tried to do for us to keep us in the community, and thank you to you gentlemen for the proclamation.
Thank you so very much for your service, and thank you, Councilman Bonin. Thank you so very much. Next, we have Mr. Corretts. Are you ready for your presentation?
Before we do that, Mr. President, can I just point out that Mr. Herman has throughout the course of this thing been moving around, waving a piece of paper, making hand gestures, and distracting, I assume, many of the members' ability to focus on the presentation. Yes. Mr. Bonin just pointed out he disrupted the photographs as well.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Mr. Herman, this is your final warning. Please don't disrespect and disrupt. Mr. Corretts? We have a special presentation by Mr. Councilman Corretts.
Good morning, colleagues. After two years of dedicated service as Israel's Consul General for Los Angeles, Sam Grunberg has decided that this year will mark his retirement. Sam has accomplished a lot that is worthy of celebration, and I'm honored to recognize him today. Mr. Grunberg was appointed Consul General of Israel in Los Angeles by Prime Minister Benjamin Netanyahu in April of 2016, and assumed the post in August of 2016. It was an honor of mine that one of the first things we got to work on together was to secure the nation of Israel its first residence in the city of Los Angeles, to house the Consul General of Israel. Mr. Grunberg is the senior representative of the State of Israel to the southwestern United States. Immediately before becoming Consul General, he served as Director General in Israel for the World Jewish Congress, an international organization representing Jewish communities in over 100 countries to governments, parliaments, and other international organizations. As the head of WJC operations in Israel, Mr. Grunberg advanced the overall mission of the WJC to strengthen and support Jewish communities around the world, as well as the State of Israel and the Jewish people. Before joining the World Jewish Congress, he worked as an attorney for a major international law firm in the United States and held positions in the field of law and finance in the US and Israel. He earned his Juris Doctor degree from the University of Miami School of Law and holds an MBA in Finance from the University of Miami School of Business, as well as an undergraduate degree from Barre-Lawn University. Originally hailing from Miami Beach, Florida, Mr. Grunberg fulfilled a lifelong dream and moved to Israel in 1990. And once in Israel, he served as a combat soldier in the IDF Armored Corps and later in the IDF Reserves as a casualty officer. I am very grateful for Sam's longstanding leadership, humbled by his commitment to keeping the ties between Israel and Los Angeles strong, and I am excited for him as he embarks on new journeys and fresh horizons. In fact, one of the great experiences of my life was to visit Israel just a few years ago, and I was fortunate enough to experience a real-life miracle. That somehow, that trip cured my fear of flying, and so now I can honestly say that I look forward to flying to Israel to see you sometime soon. And now I'd like to ask my colleague Bob Bloomingfield to say a few words as well.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you for putting this presentation together. For Sam, Sam, I can't believe it's been two years. This time has just flown by. We were in this chamber as welcoming you, what seemed like two months ago, but I guess was two years ago. And since then, our staffs have collaborated on many policy and community projects. In the two years, we continued to build the strength of the Joint LA-Israel Task Force. We were the governing co-chairs, as we set up in the charter of that task force, and our staffs have brought innovation experts to the table to help us implement cost-saving advancements for the city with that kind of collaboration. Other amazing things are annual celebration of Israeli Independence Day right here in City Hall has been inspiring, and you have been a part of that each and every year, both years that you've been here, strategizing over meetings. Our teams have worked together... Our teams have worked together on figuring out how to be more diverse and how to bring people in, and that's been wonderful, and we've gotten a lot done. You've always had a progressive and pragmatic approach that I've really appreciated. I mean, folks, we're losing a friend to Los Angeles here, although not losing the friend. We're just... Friend is shifting away to other pastors, I guess. But you've always looked out for our city as well, and I know that as you continue in your career, we will have a friend in a lot of high places, so that's a good thing for us in Los Angeles. I try to think of it not as a loss to LA, but as a gain, because we're getting somebody who understands us, who will be out there. You've always been good on the clean tech and green tech, which I've appreciated. And as was mentioned, Sam burned his law degree from the University of Miami, which might explain why he's a huge Dan Marino fan and recognizes him as the greatest quarterback ever to play the game, as you said. And coming from Sam, that means a lot, because what you may not know about him is he is a very accomplished flag football player. Is that right?
That's right.
Yeah. So anyway, I wish Sam, I wish you well. I wish that your wife, Julia, your three children, Alicia, Felicia, and Sarita, that they have a safe and wonderful new chapter in your life. We are sad to see you leaving Los Angeles, but we are, again, happy to have a friend in other places. So congratulations, Sam.
And now we'd like to ask Sam to say a few words as well. Thank you so much. Good morning, Bokoetov friends. I want to recognize all the city council members for being here and for this real opportunity to say farewell to this city. I want to especially thank Councilmember Paul Kretz and his team, and Jeff, and your entire team for organizing this farewell event in City Hall chambers. As Paul mentioned, not a night goes by that I don't go to sleep feeling grateful to him because he really did help secure the residence for the Israeli consulate in his district, and I'm very grateful for that. I want to take this opportunity on behalf of the State of Israel and the people of Israel to express condolences over the horrific shooting in Thousand Oaks last week and for the terrible fires that have spread throughout the state. Firefighters and first responders across California deserve our gratitude and appreciation for their bravery. During these challenging times, Israel stands with the city of Los Angeles, just as you have stood with us in good times and bad, and just as you've shown your friendship and solidarity. For example, that over the past 48 hours in Israel, more than 500 terrorist rockets have been fired on Israeli cities and communities, threatening the lives of hundreds of thousands of innocent citizens, and we thank you sincerely for that solidarity. Israel and the city of Los Angeles are natural partners, and this relationship reflects the special bond and common values between Israel and the United States. LA and Israel are both dynamic, diverse, and vibrant cultures, hubs of technological innovation, and immigrant societies, and so much more. The consulate of Israel in Los Angeles has been involved in some great initiatives with the city and with the community here, just to name a couple. Bringing students from LA High to Staples Center for LA Clippers game against Makabe Haifa, even though it really wasn't much of a competition or a game, but we can call it a game. Another example is just yesterday in Hollywood High School community, an art mural project was unveiled, which really celebrated our shared diversity and embraces the multicultural mosaics that are the societies of Israel and Los Angeles. I also want to thank Mayor Garcetti for his leadership and for his personal friendship, and the Mayor's Office of International Relations for their guidance and advice on these and other projects. And I really want to personally and on behalf of the State of Israel, thank all of you in these chambers this morning for your friendship and your continued support and solidarity. It's been a privilege and honor to represent Israel in this special city. I've enjoyed visiting all of the different communities that make up the tapestry of Los Angeles, and I could truly say that Los Angeles has been become a part of me, and I will take it with me when I return to Israel. I enjoy bike riding on road as much as I can in between busy work schedule, and I can tell you that I've had the opportunity to enjoy the beautiful streets and scenery of Los Angeles, which we're, of course, fighting so desperately to protect these days. And I do want to say for the record that as I stood here in chambers when I started about two and a half years ago, that I... It's true, as Councilmember Blumenfeld mentioned, that I grew up in Miami Beach, and I am a diehard Dolphins fan, but I said as the Los Angeles Rams were just coming to town, before they were nine and one, it's easy to stand here now and say I'm a Rams fan. But then I said I would have to learn and become a Rams fan, so I can please pull out that protocol, and you could see that even before they had the record they had today, that I said that I would, and I will remain, of course, first a Dolphins fan, but a Rams fan after that. So I will take that with me and all of the great experiences and opportunities that I've had. I would also like to say for the record that the Los Angeles Dodgers are undefeated when a Israeli Consul General throws out the first pitch. So keep that in mind going forward. I reached out to the Dodgers during the World Series to remind them of that, but I guess there were some other candidates. And so I just want to part with a blessing and a wish, which is that the vibrant, diverse, and exciting city of Los Angeles continue to grow from strength to strength, and I look forward to further and future partnerships with the State of Israel in the years to come. I bless you with le hitraot, that we should see each other again very soon, and thank you.
You know, as you're getting that presentation, I just want to personally thank you, Sam, for all your graciousness and everything you've done for this city. You have been a great representative of Israel and a great friend to Los Angeles. Thank you so much for your service, and we look forward to... Or I personally look forward to seeing you in Israel in the next couple of years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So do I.
Thank you, Councilman Kretz and Councilman Blumenfeld.
Mr. President, Council has item number 7, and for 7B, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that that firm be confirmed. Yes, Council can vote on the entire 7 now.
Great, so if we could open the roll for 7B? And close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
11 ayes.
Thank you.
Mr. President, Council has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred.
And that clears the desk, sir.
Members, any announcements? Any announcements? Mr. Kocorian?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do just want to take the opportunity to recognize former city council member Greg Smith, who's in the chambers with us, the former great representative of the 12th Council District. And Greg, Mr. Engler's seat is empty. I don't think he'd mind if you fill in for a few minutes just to wrap up this meeting. Oh, there he is, over there. Greg, good to see you.
Members, any other announcements? Seeing no other announcements, adjournments? I'm looking to my left. Could everyone rise for adjournments, please? Mr. Bonin's side? Mr. Kocorian's side? Any adjournments? Seeing no adjournments, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.